Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Board meetings are generally held on the third Tuesday of the month. The Board of Education is a body of school district residents elected by the community and charged with conducting school-related business. The meetings are conducted under the open meeting law, but are not open forums for the community. With that being said, visitors to these meetings are to conduct themselves properly and with respect to any other individuals at the meeting. Board of Education reserves the right to remove any individual for improper display of behavior or inappropriate language. The Board of Education will have a period of time devoted to visitor requests, following any board presentations and the approval of minutes shortly after the opening of the meeting. Individuals wishing to address the Board will be permitted to speak up to three minutes. A total of thirty minutes may be allowed for public comment. When the time comes within the agenda to do so, and we have visitors, we can go over the directions on how to address the Board. With that being said, Carla, would you mind doing a roll call for us?
Sure. Aiden Warner?
Here.
Jeffine?
Here.
Maria Thompson?
Here.
Matt Lamb?
Here.
Jackie Ova Davis?
Here.
Justin Sodell?
Here.
Dangaro? Absence. And Casey?
Before we get started tonight, we have Aiden Warner here. Aiden is a student. I think he's a senior this year, is that right, Aiden? And he's going to be representing the student body, so welcome tonight, Aiden, and we're excited to have you here.
Thank you.
Okay. Tonight we have some presentations that are gonna happen. We've got our good friends from SCI. How are you doing, guys?
Good, how are you?
So far, so good.
So, just another PowerPoint for this meeting to hopefully give you a quick update on where we were with anything and then any questions you guys have. Me, myself, and Ted will be ready to answer those. Um, so start off, uh, just to go through the metrics, um, go through that and then show this picture here. This is the picture of your SRO office, part of the alternate space. Um, it's, it's done. Uh, now, just go through a couple things. Safety, again, there's been no lost time throughout this whole project. No one's gotten hurt, nothing recorded, no lost time, someone having to go home or anything. Quality-wise, I added note here, um, just to update everyone on the situation we're having, I call it a situation, um, with the entrance area. Uh, we are still currently addressing the concrete issue with the moisture. Um, we're taking all the possible steps we can to reduce the moisture as quickly as possible to then begin that tarozzo work that, uh, is being held off right now. Um, we have Sackett, who is the tarozzo installer, uh, was here tonight, and they're coming tomorrow night, um, to blast the floor, hopefully, hopefully, open up the pores. Open up the pores, hopefully reduce the moisture, and speed up the process. It, it's just more of a result, I don't wanna dwell on this, but it's more of a result of a new slab that we did just pour. Um, and really, no one saw this coming. We were supposed to do it on the existing concrete, so, um, as we're at with that, I can answer any questions as we continue with that. Uh, to go through the costs, uh, at payoffs up to the end of August, we're about ninety-three percent build. As you see, uh, just over twelve million built for contracts, and then little over thirteen million, um, with the changes we have written to contractors and the work that we've done. And then below, as of, um, today, the change order, total amount, the net amount is, uh, three hundred seventeen thousand with a hundred twenty-two thousand about of contingency left. Um, that number might be a little different to everybody from the last time. I had a meeting with Christine, Ted was there, as well as Kyle, and we went through some of the incidentals of the project, um, and we found where we were able to pull some money from. So, that's a good amount of money we have in case anything does come up. Obviously, we're at the end of the project, so we're anticipating anything, uh, but that's about where we're at. Just to go through the status of a couple of these areas. The elementary school, um, again, just like last time, it's just, uh, currently it's punch list items for all of the trades. Um, go, they're going in there at night, during the day, sometimes at night, just doing little things here and there, um, finishing their punch lists. Middle slash high school for Area B, uh, the main office has been turned over, it's been functioning, um, throughout the start of school. And now, um, just, again, it's punch list items in there now, um, taking care of little things here and there. Anything that the school brings to us, I get the guys on it right away to address. Um, I got a note on there for the millwork, there's just a few cabinets we're missing, uh, but those will go right in once we get those outside. Uh, alternate ten space, just those bathrooms, the two gay bathrooms and the faculty bathrooms, the new, uh, slop sink room. And, uh, the SRO office, that was turned over, those bathrooms are functional, gang and faculty. Um, again, punch list items, anything comes up, we're addressing right away. Just, uh, some fin tube installed in the SRO office. Our SRO office remains, um, when that's here, it'll get thrown on. From what I've been told, it was the wrong, um, fin tube that came originally, and that's why we're waiting on it. Area C is the entrance, um, the exterior doors and glass have been installed, uh, the new vestibule is complete and usable, um, right now. The kids are filing in through there in the morning and when they leave, uh, if they're getting picked up. The remaining items are that tarozzo that we all know about, um, and then some finishing wall tile, uh, that they will finish that bottom row of the wall tile once the tarozzo's installed and the base is installed. As far as the windows go, uh, all the window frames have been installed, um, it's currently caulking around and break metal installed that's remaining. Um, some blue paneling still around the front of the entrance here, there's a spot over there, um, and that's just ongoing during the night. And then I just had a few more pictures, uh, in case no one's been around here, just to get a little bit of a visual update. Um, so that's the front entrance now. It had the underlayment on the underside of the entrance, um, it had, uh, waterproofing painting done on the other day. The masonry caps are all done, put on at the front. So it's really just that blue paneling we're, we're waiting on, a little bit of break metal. The bottom picture is the boys' bathroom, new gay bathroom of the alternate space. Uh, the top left is just of the new corridor tile on the wall and the new color we painted above it, um, with the drinking fountain and the, the change between the two tiles. The bottom right's just the upper part of that main entrance, um, where it got that waterproofing paint and the underlayment on the curve. And then a few more pictures of the windows, um, at the nurses and fitness room on the top left, the blue paneling above. And then the bottom one is the cafeteria with the new door, uh, new glass and new paneling above. And then just a few more, that's the upper part of the new vestibule with the glass and the new lights. And then just another picture of the corridor with the gray tile on the wall and the blue above. So I'll hand over to anyone that have any questions for Ted or I.
Uh, last week, Jackie and I were here to meet with John.
Yes.
Um, and we were up on the stage, and one of the things that we, um, an idea that was kind of introduced that I've never heard of is the idea of a sacrificial floor. Um, it sounds paganistic in a little bit, but like, there's that happening up there. So, um, can you talk to us a little bit about what a sacrificial floor is and then maybe a little?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't mention about the stage floor, I just didn't make it out here. Um, yeah, so essentially, the, the floor that was designed is designed for, if I correct me if I'm wrong, for reuse. Um, so it's essentially, um, has a concrete under it, and then it has a vapor barrier, uh, what you're getting, and then there's a plywood, um, in the middle. And then another, uh, the temperate, oil tempered on top. Uh, and it's pretty much used for wear and tear. You can replace it just like, uh, carpet tile or a VCT tile, um, and it's meant to receive what a stage floor receives, um, for anyone using it. You can screw into it, um, for people who have their, uh, their plays or theater, can screw into it, uh, to cure, to secure things. And then, uh, the, the boards can get replaced very easily by just undoing the screws and putting a new piece down.
So, the, the problem is, the, the switch out is, the last time that we put the floor down, it buckled. I don't know if you remember that, so that they still don't understand why it did buckle. Um, I, I don't understand why it, it, it had those waves or?
The, the consensus and what we, what we came to was that it was the wrong, um, top layer, uh, wrong material, as well as, uh, there weren't gaps in between the boards. To account for any sort of expansion. Um, so, uh, going forward, we had everyone, uh, you were there last week, you went in, I think, and then Tim from DeAustino's there, John was there. Talked about how there was gonna be gapping, how instead of staples last time, it was gonna be screws, um, and it wasn't the correct material.
So that got tore out, Justin, then?
Uh, yes.
The sacrificial floor, that's, that's the long-term solution?
Yeah, because what we, you know, in, in the, in the, what we asked for in the capital project was to move the, remove the hardwood except for the nose. So like, if you sat in the audience and, you can still, right, Wendy, like, you can still see that nose there.
Yep.
Um, but then the, the sacrificial, so you've got maybe two and a half, three foot of the old hardwood. And then from there back, it's you have, you know, the, like, four by eight, um, boards that are screwed, not glued, um, and with a gap. Um, these can be, they're, they're gonna get scuffed up, but no audience member's gonna be able to see it unless they're right up on there. Um, I think the idea for maintenance is, is that it's gonna be painted as needed, so it, it, you know, after, you know, we'll have a appropriate usage. And then once it gets to a point where it's like, hey, this doesn't, this isn't feasible any longer, hopefully, there's gonna be some guidelines on what it's going to look like before it gets to that point. Um, and we can have like a, a maintenance schedule on those, and I, I know it's gonna be an ongoing cost, but we can't, at this point in time, replace that with the hardwood, right? Like, it's, we're well past that.
Yeah, and we, we, um, just for background for the Board, um, twenty, thirty years ago, we used to put in hardwood floors on stages that was more like, um, something you would imagine, kind of like a gym floor almost. So it would be maple strips or hardwood strip, and they'd be tongue and grooved into each other, or they'd be, um, blind nailed in, um, to where it formed this, this nice floor. And what we were finding, um, over the years is that those would get, uh, beat up by stage props and scenery that would get screwed out into them. And then after a while, you'd do like six or seven or eight performances, and you'd have holes all over the place, and there'd really be no way to patch that of them, to like use a wood patch or something like that. So, in the last, I would say, ten to fifteen years on high school auditoriums, what we've been doing typically is this sacrificial floor, which can serve for musical performances or for theatrical plays. Um, and the audience doesn't see it again, like you said, it's a four by eight sheet, um, and it's painted black. Uh, and then what happens is if one or two boards get really beat up from a play that runs, you know, a number of times or whatever, or, uh, whatever the activity is there that beats it up. The school can replace that board or those two boards easily without having to bring in a contractor. Um, that's the advantage to it. Um, it's not gonna look as finished as a gym floor, um, of course, but, uh, it's, it's easy to maintain. Um, the schools that I've talked to, they, essentially, they're replacing the sheets every once in a while, maybe a few sheets every year or two. But every summer, they are painting it black again, just to bring back, um, the look of it a little bit more. So that's the idea of it.
So when you screw into it, what's underneath that, what are these screws hitting against?
Uh, this, this particular one is concrete, and then there's plywood, and then the, um, the sacrificial board is screwed into that.
So a two or three inch screw for the props or whatever, there's something for them to grab onto, it's not hitting concrete?
No.
We don't screw into the floor.
Yeah, I didn't think so, Wendy, I, I was, yeah.
So they're just like OSB board, like?
I was just gonna ask you, are those boards readily available to like the school, you say so we don't have to involve a contractor?
Just buy them in bulk and have them on hand?
Yeah, you have to use the right board.
Jordan.
I think what they used originally, you know, the last time with the waviness, it wasn't the right board. It has to be an oil tempered hardboard that you can order from Home Depot or whatever, but it's gotta be oil tempered so that it's stable, uh, and it doesn't change and, 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 you know, fluctuate with humidity and things like that.
Okay, so they're mass-produced, and you guys can give these guys a list of what to get, so we replace the correct piece?
Right, okay. It's just like every six to ten inches, there's a screw, they countersink it, and then screw it down, and that's it. Like, we could change one out probably in twenty minutes.
They have a mock setup, if you wanna take a look at it after the board meeting, if you just wanted to pop in there, they put it down.
And I think that to like, you know, cover our, our assets here is that we do, um, cover our assets.
I like that.
That, that, that's, uh, sorry, um, geez, that's not good.
We're just recording.
Sorry about that, that was a bit humorous. There it is. Um, I think, you know, what we can do is if we have other outside groups using it, it'll be like an acceptable usage. We'll have it inspected before they use it and after, 'cause one of the things, this can't be mocked. Um, so when it's mocked, um, it'll absorb water, and then it will have the possibility of buckling again or, um, showing damage. So it's just one of those things that we have to make sure that we have certain things in place before somebody else uses it, like a dance company or something else.
Is this cheaper than what we had intended to install this option?
Uh, I think if you look at the overall price of the system, it probably is a little less expensive than putting in a hardwood floor. But again, we haven't done it in the last five or ten years with school projects because of the ability for you guys to change it out.
So there's a refund?
It's kinda become the standard over the years is to use the sacrificial floor.
Is there a refund issued to the project if we've sent back the floor that didn't work and we went with a cheaper option?
Is there?
A refund?
Um, like a credit back?
Like the credit failed versus the new floor? Is there a difference in price between the floor that was installed and the floor that we are going with?
For selling for the cheaper option, do we get that money back, the difference between the two options?
Uh, well, the origi, the original floor was designed, um, to be replaced with this sacrificial system. So we didn't, we didn't specify a maple floor, like a gym floor originally. So that, that quality level wasn't built into the project, it was built in at the sacrificial level.
So it's not like you paid more for the maple floor and then we took it out and swi, switched it?
The floor that they're putting in is what we initially had proposed in this project. The issue was that when they put it in, it wasn't the correct material. So now they're ripping it out, and when they put the new floor in and, and it buckled, they're continuing to replace the floor. It's not costing us extra, they're just, they're just, we're doing it right this time, if that makes sense.
So the original new floor was the sacrificial floor?
Was this, that, that we are installing.
They put it wrong, we're taking it out, putting the right one in, still sacrificial.
Cause it wasn't the correct material to start with.
Oil tempered now wasn't oil tempered before, so like the boards that they're getting put in now?
Same fault process, same design, just wrong material.
Correct, up there you go.
That's it, cause I think someone said, I don't know if it was you or that nice guy that was up on stage with us, was saying that they were, they soaked them in water ahead of time or something, they said.
Yeah, Kyle, Kyle did, yeah.
Yeah, Kyle's our project manager on the job, and he did a little self-test on his own because he was interested in it. So we had, they had given us, DeAustino had given us a little section that was one foot by one foot, and it was essentially the oil tempered hard, hardboard, um, screwed into a piece of plywood. And he threw it in some water at its house for four days, basically, to see what would happen, and he pulled it out, and it didn't change in the dimensions. So, you know, we felt like that was a pretty good indication that it, it shouldn't change with humidity, if it's not changing if it's submerged underwater.
And the other question I had is, so when you're looking at the front of the school in this direction, there's some larger windows that are completely transparent. And maybe I missed it, but are those placeholder windows that are gonna get a darker tint to them, or are those supposed to be completely transparent?
The ones?
They're, they're very large windows.
They're over here, science rooms.
Science rooms.
They're, they're, yeah, they're, they're, any of the windows that you see that are completely like a standard window, we can see right through, those are the temporary ones that?
Maybe I missed that.
No, yeah, no, that's okay, that's, yeah, those are the temporary ones, just to have a window in place for the time being.
So when will the windows be installed?
Uh, I would have to go back and look at the list that the, uh, the glass installer provided with me. I, I don't remember, I don't remember what it was at our last meeting he told us, but I, it's probably sometime next month, but it, it's one of those. They show up, B-shift, Roman, F-C corner, aim with the district, make sure we're not disrupting classes or anything.
Anything, Pete?
So what's on your schedule?
Uh, well, as unpredictable as this floor is, we are taking it week by week, um, and testing the floor's content, moisture content, and trying to get it down to what it needs to be in order to mitigate before the install. Um, I was mentioning on the tour that it's not a, a factor of them doing the actual work. They could do the work now, but it would one hundred percent void the warranty of them fixing any problems with it. So, um, we're just doing what we can with the dehumidifiers we have, any fans, any heat, we're trying to get into this space. And, um, with Sackett coming in and opening the pores of the new concrete, um, it's kind of unpredictable, so I don't know if I can give you a exact answer, but we're taking it week by week and testing it. As they're, as soon as it's ready to go, they're, they're doing the work.
And that was a four to six week process once they get started?
It's quite a long process. There's been given, different answers given as to how long it's actually gonna take, but I would rough and say between four to six weeks, uh, based on the, um, individually cutting all the specific angles and the, from the, the, uh.
How far off are we, uh, percentage-wise with the moisture content?
Well, we, uh, we're pretty high up still. The last time we tested, which was last Wednesday, we were about ninety-eight percent.
What's it guys?
Needs to be eighty-five.
Okay, was it still climbing? I know at some point in time, we got an email that it was going up. Has, has it at least leveled off?
I think it's, it's around ninety-eight, but I think there's really, you know, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine is all around the same. Uh, it just hasn't really taken any change since we started the process. So we had, uh, Chris Love, donor of Sackett, the floor contract, to come in, talk to us at our last meeting, give his ideas, um, and that was our solution, was to blast the floor now, which he would've had to have done anyway. Hopefully, open up the pores, drive it out, and speed up the process.
Well, thanks again, guys.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right. See you tomorrow.
All right, Mr. Schlegel.
Thanks, Ed.
You were up, my friend.
I'm just gonna hand these out real quick, this was the simplest way. Thanks for having me. Um, last week, I received an email from the gentleman that runs the Rochester Indoor Track League, which we were a part of last year at the varsity level. Um, and he was, it was a group text, or email, basically asking if anybody was going to do modified indoor. Now, last year, when, um, the parents group presented to the Board, one of the questions that came up was, you know, are we going to do, offer indoor, indoor track? And I think the decision was made at that point to see how the, the varsity level went last year, kind of our first go-round within twelve or thirteen years. Um, it was very successful, you know, kids won a sectional championship, which was great, but the participation was good. Um, so when this information came to me, I went to Mr. Fiskus and said, you know, I'm getting this information about indoor modified. Um, so he says, we'll put some stuff together and, you know, if you can present to the Board next week. So, basically, it's, it's pretty simplistic, um, it's a six to seven week meet schedule, okay? Um, and, and, and I spoke to the gentleman, you, you don't have to attend every week. Um, so if, if, you know, there's things going up, you know, in your school, it's, you know, it's holidays, there's concerts or whatever, and you can't make it, you're not, unlike kind of the, the varsity one. If, if there was a week that just didn't work for your school, you didn't have to, to attend. All of the meets are at the Pinnacle Athletic Complex in Victorin, if you haven't been there, it's incredible. Um, not, you know, too far of a drive, and all the varsity, sometimes I'll go to Holden, these are all at Pinnacle. Uh, but they're all, and you'll see the schedule at the bottom, they're all two-hour windows of time, so it's not like these are gonna be six and seven RMEs where our modified age kids would be. Uh, cost, it's, it's nothing to be a part of the modified league, um, that fee is covered by the varsity indoor fee of seventeen hundred dollars, which it was last year. Um, the stipend obviously depends on who the coach is, you know, that's typically a modify, uh, stipend anywhere from sixteen to about twenty-two hundred dollars. And then busing, whatever it would cost, um, you know, pay for the bus and the driver to, to and from the events. Um, practices with, the, the varsity, uh, winter practices start, um, November twenty-fourth or fourteenth, we would push that back probably to May just to get the indoor going with the varsity kids. Um, there's the schedule there, uh, as you see, kind of as before, we get to February. So, it's just more about, you know, giving you some information, if it's something that we wanted to pursue, certainly we could. Um, you know, I think we, obviously, with our success of our cross-country and our track programs, you know, there's a, a high demand for kids in, in track, um, and it gives them another option. Now, right now, modified seasons are split into two, this, that's the only thing that's a little bit unique with this, in that it overlaps the two different modified seasons. So right now, that, the way our league works is that wrestling and swimming will go from October thirty-first, and that will be done before Christmas. And then the basketball season starts after, um, both boys and girls start after Christmas. This obviously kind of overlaps the two. And, and, and I put a call in to Kathy Voight of Section Five, or, or threw her a text this afternoon, to see if, you know, with, and, and every league's different, unfortunately, with modified, but if we got a student that wanted to swim, let's say, starting in October, could they finish up their swim, which is typically gonna be done, I think the schedule is mid-December this year? You know, could they, you know, miss, you know, miss the first week or two of, of indoor and then jump onto indoor? Um, I'm waiting to hear back. I would think that they could, cause this is kind of a new thing with indoor for the modified age kids, so, um, but that's for, I just wanted to give some information out there and, and see if, um, you know, it's something that we wanted to pursue, so. But the reason, the timings, because they will be, um, they've got a meeting next week with the, um, Rochester Winter Track League. There's three, ultimately, three different leagues that kind of govern, Section Five really doesn't govern indoor track, there's three different leagues that do. Um, and those three leagues get together, and they'll be doing schedules, and they just wanted some input as to who might be offering modified. I know in our league, there are some school districts that are gonna offer varsity level that didn't offer last year. I know there was discussion in our first AP meeting about, um, probably four or five schools that were looking at going into, to indoor track. So, now if those are gonna offer modified, I don't know.
Last year, didn't we, did the modified kids practice, or they couldn't compete?
They, they basically had like a club type of thing that they, they got together two or three times a week, and that would be the other thing. Obviously, space is an issue with, with indoor because, you know, we don't have an indoor practice facility. So, they, they wouldn't, you know, I talked to Pete Beuler about it, and, and he would probably stay on that same, that formula, maybe they practice two to three times a week, and they wouldn't necessarily practice every single day. Um, just, you know, logistically would be, it's a, it's a nightmare, but, and with the numbers that, that, you know, could happen, but, yeah, it would be something similar to that, I would think.
Then, what did we vote on last year? We improved indoor shot for one year, and then we had to vote on it to get the shot, so?
Right. So this would be available to seventh and eighth grade?
Correct, yeah.
You mentioned the numbers, would it, we'd have, would we have a number either top end or bottom end that we wouldn't want to wander, wouldn't want to go over?
You know, a good question, I, I mean, I, we've had modified swim in, at six or eight kids a couple of years ago, we've had modified basketball teams later on. I mean, I would think with modified track with seventh and eighth grade, you'd probably have, you know, at a minimum ten, I mean, that's a guess. Signups are gonna go up next week for winter, so I mean, we could be able to judge a little better, I think, probably by the end of next week or the week after, to see who might be interested.
My guess probably would be at the higher end that you'd start to worry about, you know?
I don't think so, I would guess. You know, just looking at the number of kids that maybe run cross-country that might be interested in running in the track.
Right.
Um, you know, I would think we, you'd have numbers that were decent, probably just, you know, to have it happen, but.
So like our, our, the modified, the basketball swim, I mean, with that pool, that, that's kind of a catch-all for me as far as, that would be tough for kids and could pull away. I know we didn't have?
We, yeah, we didn't have mod swim.
A lot for modified swimming, and I don't even know if there's another option, and those are two team, somewhat team things, so?
Right, basketball, I know mod basketball, I should be like twenty-eight kids for boys, I mean, it's a huge number.
That's, yeah, yeah, yes.
It's a huge number, um, and, and would some of those kids gravitate to this as opposed to, but they might. Girls, I think we had twelve or thirteen last year, um, I mean, that's probably always a risk, um.
Cause they could do all, I mean, I think if you get modified level, that's so great for the split seasons.
I agree.
I even love it for the concept, maybe in the future, of soccer and volleyball, let these kids get hu, the access at this young age, because we don't have a soccer program that's continuing. We are really struggling with that, so that's tough to get these kids having that exposure, and I would hope that they could still get that option, and if we don't have those two team kind of components at a modified level, that would be tough for kids to experience that.
Right, and I pushed for that, actually, we had a discussion at our meeting last June, and there was, there was a few of us that wanted to go back to splitting, splitting the modified volleyball and soccer seasons, just because giving kids and oppo, numbers are dwindling, and giving those kids an opportunity to do both, and then see which one they prefer. So now when they do get to the JV varsity level, you've kind of, they, they've taken their path, and some of us, you know, pushed it, and there were some others, obviously, some schools that had bigger numbers, are like, no, we're good the way we are. But I, I, yeah, I think that's a good model, and I, I think, um, you know, I kind of like that now, because regardless if we have indoor track or not, you, you have kids that can swim and play basketball, because that season ends before basketball season starts, which I think is a good thing. I mean, that's, that's been the model, at least our league has done for a, for a long time, so, um.
So Jeff, say that again for me, so there's, you've got swimming kinda on the front end.
Right.
And then basketball on the, on the other side, and then track spans both.
Yeah, that's, and, and I didn't know when their season went until I saw this schedule. So, so it used to be, pre-COVID, girls' basketball would be prior to Christmas, boys' basketball would be after Christmas, and, and they would flip-flop. And, and the problem that ran into it? And, and the problem that ran into it on our league was, again, it's a numbers issue. Schools that have wrestling would lose some of their wrestlers to basketball. And they wanted to have boys' basketball be in the second half of the season, so that the, they could get their wrestling kids in the first, you know, that first window of modified. Um, but then the flip side is if girls' basketball is early, we do some girls' swimmers, because they'd have to choose. So when COVID hit, and the way that just played out, we just, we decided to put both basketballs after Christmas. Um, and, and it made, it made it somewhat easier for gym space, because the varsity kids are playing, so gyms are opened up, and, and you could get, you know. And most of us are in a situation where we've got two gyms that we can utilize for practices, so it seemed to work out. And then, you know, that was pretty successful, so they kept that model for this year, where, where the basketball will be, um, after the first of the year. And a little bit later than normal, because one of the issues that we always talk about too is, you know, those modified kids used to end at the end of February, and then would sit around until the middle of April, until the spring was, you know, modified season. This way, they're, they're kind of pushing into the, to early, uh, March, and the, and the window for them isn't as long. So, um, it seemed to work last year. Now, with the way this, you know, this track thing and, and overlapping kind of both seasons, I don't know how that'll play out. I mean, it, it stopped it out, but that would be a, because basketball season would have started by the time they're finishing up at the end of January by a couple of weeks, so. You know, I mean, ultimately could.
It sounds like the track at a modified level would probably be something, you know, a couple of days a week you could go and do.
Absolutely.
Skill-wise, I don't know how modified coaches would feel if kids showed up two days for basketball, two days for, you know, I, I don't know.
Right. Right, and, and to my knowledge, the dual participation thing isn't allowed at the modified level, and I'm not sure we want to go down that road anyway to be honest with you. Personally, I think it's, it's, it'd be chaotic, but you could, you know, if you're, yeah, it's a, but you can almost see this is, is like pizza, like, almost like a club type of thing. Where you could do these meets, and you can, I mean, because you can structure the practices, um, there is a, you know, minimum requirement. But once you've met the minimum requirement, how much you participate, you know, is, is, is relevant, so.
So could you see, could you see like, uh, kids start doing this, there, there's full swimming season, and then at the end of that swim season, transitioning to track?
I, I think they could. I, I don't see why not.
But maybe not so much doing the track and then transitioning to basketball, or?
I think that would be tougher.
Right, because.
From, from two perspectives. I think swim numbers, you know, are, are lower.
Right.
And, and now if you, you commit to swimming, now you can jump into track, you can, you know, find your niche. But basketball, by the time you're in the third or fourth week, you're, you know, you're running plays, and you've got, and you have a set number, and your number could swell from twelve to twenty-four, and now we got problems. So, um, I think definitely on the front end, I could totally see kids that swim, when they're finishing up, you know, jump right into that track, because that's, you know, they're, they're getting into it, you know, three, four weeks in. And, you know, it's, it's not a, it's not a numbers issue really, but basketball would be tricky.
So it'd be contingent.
If you, if you weren't a swimming kid, could you start with track and then partway through go to basketball?
That would be a decision that.
The coaches are.
Yeah, that would, because, I mean, you're asking a guy to coach his basketball, that would be tricky. I mean, you'd have to almost say, okay, I can do, I'll do indoor for five weeks, and then I'm done.
I guess that's what.
I suppose you could, as, at the modified level.
Right.
I wouldn't necessarily be against that, because I think, you know, to Jackie's point, I think.
Try.
Get these kids to experience what they like and, and maybe what they're good at.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at that age. I mean, I'm, I'm all in favor of offering up as many things as you can, and that especially, because there isn't a feeder, you know, track program. I mean, this will be their, a lot of these kids, their first endeavor into, into track.
Yeah, cause run club does it.
I mean, run club, but they're, they're not doing it, so.
Same experience.
Right, they're not.
It's a great experience.
Right, so they're just outrunning.
Which is great. Run club is awesome.
Absolutely. It gets them excited about that, but yeah, this is, and then obviously the meets are pretty, I mean, being that they're, they're set up for two hour windows, they're, they're pretty controlled. And they, and they might say, you can only bring X number. I mean, I could envision us having a decent number, and then I say, okay, Oldfield, you're only bringing fifteen kids this week, because we've got, you know, fourteen schools that are coming, and you can't bring your thirty-five. So, I mean, those are all particulars that, as we get more information, I can share.
Yeah.
Um, this was just the schedule, and, and I got some costs, and, and went on the run, so.
Mr. Schlegel, could you just walk us through the seasons, like, uh, when does the swim season start, like, around what week?
Modified or varsity?
Mo- modified.
So, so modified will start October thir, that Monday, October thirty-first. So that the modified fall seasons will end, I think our last contest is like October twentieth, so the kids have about a week, a week and a half off, the modified kids. And then that, that fall, or that winter season will start October thirty-first. So our swimmers, if they're swimming, it'll be in the pool, you know, that, that first day.
So that's swim and basketball?
Swim and wrestling, which we don't have.
Swim and wrestling, okay.
So.
And when does that end?
That will end before Christmas. Typically, you know, eighteen, I think our last modified swim meet on the schedule is the eighteenth.
Okay.
So, done, Christmas break, got nothing going on. And then typically what they used to do, again, prior to COVID, would be your, your, your second block of, of modified would start that first day you're back from Christmas break, which would, you know, the third or fourth or whatever. They pushed it back a couple of weeks, because they, they, you know, we, we discussed this, we wanted to push the modified kids more into March to kind of shorten that, or, you know, shorten that window when they're done with modified in the winter, to when they start modified in the spring. Because a lot of kids were sitting around six, seven, eight weeks, you know, finding other things to, to do, so.
So that basketball would be the second part, so that would start sometime early in January?
Uh, I think January tenth, and that goes, I think, until like the first week in March, typically seven, eight weeks. Which is what they tried to do with all the modified sports, people were on that seven, eight, you know, seven, eight week window.
So that overlap might just be like the last three Saturdays there?
Right, mm-hmm.
And is there ever a time where all of the mo, and again, just, new me, my oldest is now just getting into sixth grade, so sports, I'm, I'm learning all of this now. Uh, is there ever a time that there are cuts at the modified level?
We've never done that. I mean, we've never done it.
Okay.
Now, we've had numbers that you, you could, I mean, we've got twenty-two or twenty-three kids on the modified volleyball team.
Okay.
In years past, we've added a second team. Um, we've, we've done that for, we did it for softball years ago. We, we, you know, basketball was always one where they always had two teams. Now, at the girls' level, we've only had one for the last few years, but boys, you know, they had twenty-eight kids last year, and you still had two teams of fourteen or fifteen, it was huge. Um, there has been discussion at the league level because of scheduling to have one team and one team only, regardless. Which, you know, I, I, I get the perspective, but I'm also a little bit against that from now. Again, you're taking a twelve or thirteen-year-old, you're going, okay, you're gonna get cut. You know, I mean, there's pros and cons, I guess, to, to whatever argument you wanna make, so we've never done that.
Okay.
Um, at the modified level, but, um.
I just ask for the kid that, you know, puts all of their eggs in the basketball basket, right? And that they decide not to do indoor track if this comes to fruition, and then could they potentially find out that they didn't make the team, and now they've missed out? But it sounds like that's not.
Well, and, and, and in something like that, um, you know, we would all be, if the decision made to make cuts or have cuts at the month, and a kick, we would always let them jump in at that point to do something. I mean, you know, say, okay, look, you know, I mean, much like we would do at the varsity level. I mean, we've had years past where we've had kids get cut, baseball, let's say, and the next day they were track practice, you know, and, and, okay, I'm gonna be a track kid now, so.
Gotcha.
I would envision that, if that were to be, you know, we would do something similar, maybe allow kids to participate here.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
So, um, is this something that the board is in favor of? I'm just looking at the dates and knowing that, um, at our October board meeting, we probably have to hire a coach, um, because, um, you're starting then in November. So I just, um.
Jeff, do you know how many, um, modified kids that they had last year, kind of running with, you know?
There were days, there were ten, there were days, there were twenty. I mean, they, you know, they would have, and I think they included the sixth graders too.
Yeah.
So that was the other piece, where you'd get some of those kids, because there's no, I mean, that was part of it too. There's nothing for those sixth graders. That's being discussed at the state level, seeing if they're gonna allow sixth graders to play modified. I think that's a discussion I have in December. Um, so I think you had the sixth graders, and their numbers would be a twenty-something, but without them this time, you know, they were probably ten to fifteen.
I mean, I can speak for myself, just, I just, the number part, I just don't know, and I don't know what that would do if there's a lot of kid, you know, I just, I wish we had an idea of interest.
I mean, I mean, we'll know, like I said, I think, you know, Kathy and I, we're gonna get signups up next week for the, you know, some heated schedules and physicals. And, um, you'll have a better idea, I think, in a week or two. I mean, by the first week in October, for sure, you know, we'll know.
Right.
And it could be ten, it could be twenty, but, I don't know.
Well, and here's the thing, so now we, we add an extra option, right? So now there, there would be three possible options, swimming, track, and basketball. I think if, if this is something that we do offer, we have to make sure that our students are educated on what their choices are. And that if they decide to swim, there's a potential for them possibly to do track.
Right.
We have to determine whether or not that potential still exists. If they decide to do track, are we saying that it's something that we should allow them to do for basketball? I'm indifferent, um, in, 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 in that aspect, but whatever the decision is, it needs to be clear, and they need to know.
Right.
Here's what I have in front of me, just like courses that are offered. Here's the courses that they have, this is what it's going to entail, and here's an opportunity for it, so.
I mean, it's almost like.
Hate to just blindly say, let's do this.
Right.
Could, can we just hear what numbers are, can we?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, we'll gather, like I said, we'll gather numbers, the, the plan is to put them up next week, you know.
It's a general interest.
By the first weekend I go over, we'll have a pretty good handle, you know?
Yeah, I, I just, I just.
And if probably, I mean, depending upon how you go, I would, I would, you know, you talk about communication, I think, you know, it's, whether it's a parents' square, it's a ladder home to those kids, and say, here's, here's what your options are. If you choose this, like, you know, here's what you can do if, if, if you're choosing swimming, yeah, you can still jump into track, but swimming's not over, because you'll still have almost a month of it. You know, if that's what we decide to do.
Now, would this be something that's pushed out through PB, like, where?
We've tried to reach out. It's, it, the middle school kids, it's tough for signups. I mean, you know, we put the signups on the wall, and the older kids, the older kids are great, but they'll sign up, but the younger kids.
They walk right by. Don't have any idea, right.
Yeah, so we've tried to do it with, with, in physical education a little bit, and just talk it up, and, um, try to get them to sign up there, and, and have paperwork, you know, the, the necessary paperwork that Kathy has to give out for, you know, for the house stuff. Um, and that's probably the best place to do it, because we'll see them all.
So what are we? One of my thoughts, but that is, you know, you put a coach on this for the full season, you're potentially looking at four weeks of full participation if kids are coming and going. You know, so you've got the kids to catch them from swim, going to this, and then going to basketball, they're in this for a couple of weeks, and then they're out, right? That would, that would, you know, so I think that's something we kind of gotta look at too.
So are you saying, you're thinking that we might have big number at one point, but a smaller number at the front in the end?
Right, so you, for the first, for through December, you might have eight kids, and then it might jump up in January, and then by the end of January, you might be back down to eight kids, because they go and play basketball.
The same token though, it could help our numbers in basketball reduce the size, that you don't have to be kids.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
And it's, and it's, and it's a guessing game, like, if, if we, if we came out and said, you can only, you can only pick indoor basketball. You know, the kids that, you know, we can sit here and think, okay, some of those kids that maybe are fringe kids, let's say, they might go to track, they may not, because there's something. Right. I love basketball, I'm going no matter what.
Anyway.
But the flip side is, they might, they might, I'd rather track, you know? So, you know, to, to Pete's point, it's, it's a, you don't know, I mean. And again, I'm just, and I'm just presenting information, I mean, like, I think we would get some kids, but.
Well, I think the interest is there, obviously. I mean, look at the programs, and it's, it's, it's there, it's not, and I, and it's such an interesting concept, because getting kids active is what, I mean, it's, it's what I want.
That's what we want.
I want anything that you can do, and I love the fact that so many people came out and did indoor track and got active, and pulled some people out that didn't do other things. You know, um, the, the tough component is on a, on a physical standpoint for, for young adolescent children, if they're gonna be running cross-country, and then they're gonna be running indoor track, and then potentially, running is their thing, if you're gonna be running track. That's probably not something for a young adolescent child that is the greatest for their body, seeing I treat them, but, um, you know, again, that's a tough, tough component. Also, running isn't, and again, I'm not, I'm not a runner, so the skill set you talk about in basketball, developmental from young all the way up through. Running probably isn't quite as much of that, maybe, I, I don't know, but probably something that they can still do and learn at an eighth, ninth, tenth, you know?
Right.
Just, just things to think about, but certainly, I wouldn't want the, the.
I mean, it would be a lot cleaner if it was, if that season was in the one half and you go.
Yes, that would be tricky.
Yeah, if it didn't have that, like, so.
No, no, right.
And it's a question.
That would clean it all up.
Cause giving people involved in something at a halt period and letting them try, which is great at this modified level, which we can do that for kids, you know, so.
What's the Saturday modified schedule for basketball? Are they playing games on Saturdays?
They will play one or two over the course of their season, typically not, I mean, they used to be, they scheduled them all on Saturdays, and, um, they'll play over the course of eight weeks, probably a couple of Saturdays.
Are we saying so that January's schedule is pretty much Saturdays? Are we saying firmly that if they're in basketball, they can't compete in those events?
Well, they can't dual, they can't, and it's a modified, so you can't both at the same time.
It's too bad. Can't just show up on Saturdays just to finish up the season.
Right, that's around.
And I mean, do your practices during the week, and then be able to just compete on the meets, I guess.
And again, that's.
I'm looking for a loophole here, a gray area, if you will, but I understand that's the definition of. Just so people can have options. Yeah, because it would be cool, when you look at the schedule, it, it kind of seems pretty beautiful.
And then what I can do too, and I, I mean, I can certainly reach out to those schools that, that have had modified. I mean, it won't necessarily be perfect for us, because people conduct their modified seasons differently than we do. Like, they may play modified basketball, girls first and boys second, but I can certainly reach out and say, like, what do you do with these situations? Because I'm sure they have kids that wanna do, you know, two different things, and, and how do you, how do you maneuver that? Again, this schedule is, is gonna be standard through Section Five, so regardless of when you're having your boys' basketball season, there's gonna be overlap, there's no doubt. So, I mean, I can, I can certainly do that, um, see what they do.
I mean, the way I s- see it with the dates you gave, so if you were a swimming kid only, swimming and track, you would miss two track meets. And if you were a track and a basketball kid, you would then miss three track meets. So really, if you were a swimming, track, and basketball kid, it almost, you couldn't, it'd be pretty difficult to do all three.
No.
If you were, you know, two out of the three.
You could do two, probably. You couldn't agree, I would, I would agree with that. That would be tough. And we don't, we don't, you know, we have, last year, I think we had one or, or two years ago, we had, I think, one or two kids that did modified swimming and then didn't play basketball. Um, didn't have mod swimming last year, um, you know, typically because, because in years past, that modified swimming was in the first block, and girls' basketball was in the first block. Obviously, they chose one or the other.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's starting at the seventh grade level, and if you chose, you still didn't really know what you wanted to do, even swimming, you're in basketball the next, and, and, you know, cover all three over your course of two years modified, if you still haven't, uh.
Right.
Figured out what you're.
Well, it's interesting, I mean, if you, potentially, you could, I mean, if you really enjoy that winter track and love basketball, you could do it with sport.
Once you get.
When you have the varsity.
Right, correct.
I mean, that would be, that would be an interesting idea.
And we will probably have a couple like to do that, so, yeah.
Right, which is.
We had kids this year do that.
We had, yeah, we had, we had a couple last year, so, and I know for sure we're gonna have one this year, so.
So you're saying that you will ask, though, if it's considered dual for the kids to do basketball, and then?
My understanding is it's not. I sent the text out today, I sent to Kathy Voight, I said, can, and I asked about the modified, and she goes, yeah, I said, no, she goes, yeah, you can. I go, I thought you couldn't for modified, and I'm waiting to hear back, because I'm.
Okay.
Pretty sure you can't do it at the modified level, um, and again, whether you want it or not, that, that's a whole nother topic too, so, so.
We're looking for numbers?
Just the levels of interest, yeah.
Love for how you're gonna roll this out for kids, and whether or not they can overlap multiples.
The overlap, I think, I think we can control that. I think that's, that's an internal decision.
It's no problem.
Whether or not they can actually do two at once, that's a, that's a state and a section decision, and that'll be out of our hands. But if, if I'm a coach and I'm okay with a kid coming a couple of weeks late to the, to my sport, so be it, that, I think we can do that internally.
And you said other schools have the.
There's, there's, there's two or three other schools in the league that are talking about varsity level indoor track, now whether they're gonna have mods.
Okay, we don't know the modified, and y'all are interested.
I think, yeah, Alexander Attic, I think you talked about, I think Hubbard did too, um, looking at their numbers. So, again, modified level, we were the first last year to bring it back, didn't have modified. I'm sure there's some probably Monroe County and, and even Livingston that might have modified at that, at that level, and I can, I'll reach out. The guy in the Section Five hole is pretty good, and I'll just say, hey, you know, who had modified last year, and, you know, give you their names, and I'll reach out with them and see how they, how they figured it out.
Transportation, it's safe to assume that's easily doable for Josh.
All right, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, on to item three, minutes. Be it resolved with the minutes of the August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two meeting be approved. Can I get a motion?
Just a move.
Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, Carla, do we have any visitor requests tonight?
No.
Okay, on to the approval of warrants. Be it resolved that after an audit of the bills, payment of the warrants, and internal claims, our reports be approved. Can I get a motion?
So.
Uh, second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, treasurer's report, uh, be it. Uh, treasurer's report, uh, be it resolved that the treasurer's report for June twenty 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 be a, or, excuse me, twenty twenty-two be approved, can I get a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Um, on to our first reading, this is policy eighty-five ten, use of assistance animals, John?
Yeah, so, um, this policy is pretty straightforward, there is a potential, um, for the first time that I'm here, um, that we may have, um, an employee or a student, um, need an assistance animal while here in school. I wanna, um, just remind you and draw the line, this is completely different than the use of therapy dogs. Um, for example, there's a policy that the board had created a few years ago, um, and I'll use Mr. Montroy as an example, where, um, we received information that his dog was trained, professionally trained, he comes here, his dog comes here and helps, you know, with our students. Um, this is an accommodation that we just have to provide for this employee or for the student. So I contacted our insurance company, contacted our attorneys, um, we do not have a policy in place for assistant animals, so this is the most generic that we could, um, you know, that we could come up with, and, um, basically, um, if the child or the, um, adult needs it, um, we have to provide it. So a lot of my questions were, well, you know, can I ask, uh, what type of dog it is and, you know, all of those things, there are procedural things, like, when is the dog gonna eat? When is the dog, you know, gonna use the restroom? Um, that is all on the owner, it's not on the district, and this is covered under our insurance policy, because I, you know, said, well, what if this dog just turns around and bites somebody, or, you know, is this dog gonna be on the bus? Or in class, you know, the dog's walking down the hallway with this with this person, you know, the kids are kinda gonna be all over it like a therapy dog, that's that's what they do. Um, but, um, we are, we're bound to allow this to happen. Um, and and yes, of course, those answers if and when this potential situation comes about. Um, the district side of it will get those answers, but, um, we need to have this policy in place. Um, I will let the board know that I removed the use of small ponies, um, because there was, um, policies in other school districts.
Disappointment.
Are you disappointed?
I was, yes.
Um, I don't, but, um, so, uh, this is.
There's a second reading, awesome.
So, um, knowing that this is coming down, down the line, um, this is the policy that, uh, the board needs to review, like I said, it's pretty plain and simple, um, I I don't think there's much to add to this, um, we'll make up our own, you know, type of procedures for these things, but it is an accommodation that we that we must allow, um, there's nothing around that, so.
And it's a dog.
What's that?
And it's a dog.
It's gotta be a dog.
And it's a dog.
Has to be a dog.
Correct.
Or a teacher.
Um, that's something that we're gonna have to find out, um, if and when this takes place, I'm not assuming this is gonna take place until the end of the school year, um. My conversation with the person who was going to need it, apparently, you know, I overstepped, because I said, oh, jeez, you know, I, you know, me myself being a diabetic, you know, I could easily have a service dog with me every day. Um, you know, my hand was slapped by our attorney saying, you can't ask one question about it, just let it happen. And, you know, I didn't, like I said, I didn't like that response, because I said, well, that, I mean, I I need, we need to know, I need to know the ins and outs of this, and they said, you have absolutely no right to do this, this is, you know, a FERPA and HIPAA law, and it's an accommodation that, um, that's reasonable, that school districts must provide. So this is, this is the type of situation we're in, I don't think I'm gonna get that resistance from the person, I think we'll be able to communicate and talk about the needs and how things are gonna work, but, um, I I honestly don't know what type of dog this is gonna be, I mean, it could be a little, you know.
Do we have to like, do they have to provide an insurance policy, I mean, where if a dog goes by.
Nope, nope, it's all on our insurance, nope.
No, it's our policy.
So the liability's on us.
It's under our insurance.
But we have, it's on our insurance companies.
They do not need to provide us a single thing.
Well, they have to provide that it's up to date on it, shots, I would imagine, baby's vaccine.
No, 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 no.
That's.
Therapy dogs, absolutely.
So that's a no.
It's a no.
Yes, and those are the same questions I had asked, we cannot ask for one piece of record regarding this. Which I find very difficult.
Can we ask for something stating that they have to have this dog? Somebody just show my dog and say, this is my dog, I can go on the avenue.
No, it's gotta be on there, it's gotta be on a five oh four.
Right, I was gonna say.
Yes, yes, yes.
Is that right, Michelle?
But that's.
Is that right, Michelle?
Thank you for that special occasion.
Yes.
It has, you just can't walk in a building with a dog, it has.
No.
Well, yeah, but you don't necessarily.
Well.
Families come from out of town with dogs and we are legally not allowed to even ask if it is a service dog, they don't have to wear their little vest to say, I'm working, some do, some don't, um. Because we've run into that for basketball games
Mm-hmm.
in the past, and we've we just have to kinda sit there and just remind them to please keep the dog on the leash.
Where did, did someone give us that guidance, or like, how, where did that?
We reached out to our SROs and the lawyers and things of that nature, but.
Okay, so that's where it came from, previously, okay.
I don't think I'm gonna have that type of, I think we're gonna get the answers and I think everything will be fine, but just letting the board know that, um.
This is new territory.
This is, this is new territory, this is something that we need to allow, and here's the policy.
I guess, well, you said it'll be on an IEP or five oh four plan, that's for student, I mean, so it's a bottom and right, I don't have a five oh four plan.
Yeah, that is. Not that we're aware of.
Right, not anymore, um, but if, if if I wanted to bring my dog, like, I don't have any paperwork that says I need it as an adult, as an employee.
Correct.
How is that, I mean, that, is it a free for all then, like? Just bring our dogs.
What about the pony land, if somebody walks into a basketball game with a pony, you asking questions then, or you gonna?
No, it's frowned upon, dad.
Frowned upon.
Well, I, I did, right, if we deal with it coming.
John's asking questions about ponies.
Jack is like. Lynn answered.
Right, I mean, you're right, because there are limited questions you can ask, like.
There was a lady on the plane with a peacock.
Someone walked into Labor Day's with a python, legally, we weren't allowed to ask them to leave.
That's right.
We were able to yell when the lady was letting a drink out of the drinking pot, I'm like, that's a no-no.
That's what I handled.
Right, but you can bring it in the building, and you can sit in our waiting room and it can do whatever.
So there's gonna be a second reading?
Correct, um, there, it, there could be, there could be three readings of it, absolutely, um.
Really?
I'll be honest with you, when I work with this, with the attorneys, I I don't know what you would possibly add. Um, because again, you know, it's different than a therapy dog, where we could ask for the licensing and all of, you know, the dog shots and and all of that, um, here, you cannot.
I am curious what the answer is when it comes to the allergies, not just for other students, but also for the teachers.
Right.
If I'm a teacher and I have to teach that student and and I'm allergic to dogs, how do we make that work?
Right.
If the dog can't come into my classroom, because medically, they can't.
Right.
So I am curious.
I mean, like, what, like peanut-free zones, you can't bring peanuts in places like, and there is, would it be a dog-free zone? I don't know, then that means that kid can't come in, right?
I don't think we are there yet, um, I mean, I'm, you know.
I don't know, like, if there's.
I think we're probably six months from this happening, but, um, this isn't gonna be the end of my questions when when the time comes, um.
Yeah.
Because you're right.
Because I think there has to be, I mean, I know legally, there's only some, you can't ask certain things, but there has to be somewhere, some.
Yes, there, there just needs to be some common sense too.
Right, right, oh, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
So the last little ditty there on there is, kinda puts it on John, right, the way I read it, the last sentence, superintendent or designee may create procedures, regulations and or building specific rules regarding the use of service animals on school grounds by individuals with disabilities.
So what this policy does is just really, really covers the board in the awareness that, um, that service animals are allowed as an accommodation on campus, which you have to provide anyway, we just don't have it in writing.
Gotcha.
So if we continue to not have it in writing, what would happen?
Um, the person would still be able to bring their service dog into school.
Their way, right.
Ponies might be available.
What's that?
Ponies might be allowed.
That opens the door.
There were, there were a few animals that I eliminated out of this policy.
Right, with this policy then, does it allow the district to sort of go ahead and get a bite policy, I'm sure they probably gotta put some extra thing on there, right?
It's all on our insurance, we contacted our insurance, because my question was, what happens?
Do we have it currently?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, so it's not, we're not adding anything?
No, 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 it's under our current policy.
We have.
So it sounds like we have the insurance, this policy has to get put in place, but it sounds like as a district, there are some things that need to be researched and thought through before, I mean, who's cleaning up when the dog has an accident in the hallway, who's cleaning that?
Correct, correct, that's all on us, yes.
Those are allergies, like, you know, those are the things, so it goes beyond this policy, it sounds like.
Yeah, it depends on the student and the schedule and, you know, um, you know, those those types of things, and I think it's gonna be a lot of education too. Um, you know, if if someone brings the dog in, what is the difference between J C's therapy dog and this person's service dog? Because the service dog is servicing this person only, while Mr. Montroy's dog services other, other, you know, students, so there's, there's a fine line here. Um, and, uh, yeah, it's, uh, fun stuff.
So it sounds like we might as well.
So it's gotta go through two layers, though, before it gets to that point, first, it has to be on the five oh four or the IEP. Then, once it gets added to that, then it would have to go through John for the logistics of the reasonable accommodations.
Procedures, protocols, yes.
However.
Currently, right now, I know the family is is being trained with this service dog, because we did have a nice conversation, like I said, I don't think there's gonna be a wall that's gonna be put up where, you know, someone's gonna walk in tomorrow and say, you know, you can't ask me that, I think it's gonna be a, a very compromising conversation and
Right, because if it's a legitimate animal for a reason, they want it for the child or for themselves, and it wants to be a productive situation, not a daily fight crap.
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, as as much as I wanna say, so what do we expect the dog to do when you, when you run into an issue? You know, if I'm a diabetic and I have a low level, is this dog gonna start barking at me, or is it gonna jump up on my lap? Like, we need to educate our, we need to educate our colleagues and people that will be exposed to this, you know.
And I would think as a safety issue for the person who it is, you wouldn't, not that you can ask that question, but you can attempt to ask it and see, or, you know, hey, could you offer, what is this thing, what should I look for?
Correct.
You know, if something's not going well with you as a diabetic.
And and that's where the common sense comes in, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a service dog work with me every day and not tell anybody
What's your dog doing? Right, yeah.
what it does and why it's.
These kids go wild, they, you know.
And I, and I honestly, I'd be surprised if we ran into that, so, um, while it may sound, you know, tough to implement, I think with, um, you know, with those kind of conversations and the understanding and, um, you know, a little common sense, it'll, it'll, we'll make it work.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve, uh, policy eighty-five ten, the use of assistance animals. I did a second.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Uh, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed, motion passes. Um, all right, Chris E, on to reports.
Not, not allowed to report, um, I'm still waiting on, um, audit entries from the auditors, I did leave a message with them last week and haven't heard back, um, but I'll be following up with them. Um, tax collection is underway with the county, I don't know if anyone has, we've not received any phone, like, we've had a couple of questions, like, when do we, where do we go, what are the hours? And, um, our website is updated with all that information, there's a link to where people can put up, look up their taxes. Um, big red letters, new procedures starting September first, um, and the county's been fantastic to work with, I can't say enough about Kevin Andrews and and the amount of effort he's put in, um, in communicating, um. So, um, we get our first payment after the cutoff, uh, for October thirty-first, um, postmark date, we'll get a check after all of those are posted. We'll also get one, um, November, first part of November, when, uh, they close everything out. Um, and then, of course, obviously, we'll get the reports that we need, um, of the unpaid taxes, they could turn it over to the county, but the good thing is they, the county's doing the collection, so it's an easy, easy flip, so. But that's, that's all I have.
That's good, yeah, but it's been an easy transition there. Any questions for Christine? Thanks for seeing, John?
Um, there's a couple people that I'd like to recognize, um, that have won some awards here. The first one, I'll read this letter to you from the New York State Association of School Nurses. Um, received this this week, dear Mr. Fiskus, congratulations on your school nurse Kathleen Starkweather for being recognized as the recipient of the two thousand twenty-two New York State Association of School Nurses Award for Excellence in School Nursing. Um, the School Nurses Association Zone Twelve, um, colleagues of Wyoming, Monroe, Orleans, Livingston, Wayne, Ontario, Yate, Seneca and Genesee Counties have nominated and selected Kathleen to receive this prestigious award. Um, the, uh, the association recognized school nurses in New York State who excel in their practice of school nursing. The qualities your school nurse exemplifies are the standards set forth by the New York State Education Department, which include care provider, educator, advocate, change agent and manager. The Zone Twelve school nurses feel that Kathleen has demonstrated collaboration, communication, education and leadership within your school community. Congratulations on behalf of the New York State Association of School Nurses, and we hope that Kathleen will be able to join us at the two thousand twenty-three annual conference in April, where she will be formally recognized for her accomplishments, best regards. Um. She's a rock, she's an absolute rock star, you know, um, since I've been here, um, and I know working over here in the middle high school building, she's an absolute rock star. And, um, is so deserving of this award, um, and just even anything, both our nurses have done through COVID is, um, just above and beyond. You know, my colleagues that are in schools of, hey, how are your nurses handling it? Um, you can't, you can't beat them, so congratulations, Kathy. And I think she's planning on going to that conference, yeah, I think it's in Syracuse this year, so congratulations.
That's a lot of comments you listed off there, right, that's a pretty big area, pretty big geographic area.
Right, absolutely, yeah, so. Um, this next one I received from the School Boards Association. Uh, the School Boards Association has a recognition program and it's designed to acknowledge those school board members who strive continually to expand their governance, knowledge and skills. Um, our records indicate that one of your board members, uh, have earned one of our board achievement awards ranging from level one to level four. Enclosed, you will find a copy of the board member's award letter and their respective award, and, um, this goes to Matt Lamb for totaling seventy-five points in the New York State School Boards Association for Leadership Development Training, so, congratulations, Matt.
Yeah, right.
That's right.
Didn't see that coming.
No, I didn't.
What?
Thank you.
Our Fall Flu Shot Clinic is tomorrow for staff six thirty to eight, so hopefully, um, that covers the whole district here before school, um, starts. And then the community will have a chance to come in here from eight to ten thirty here in the community room and get, um, get a flu shot. Obviously, homecoming week is this week, lots of great activities and theme days in school already, both in both buildings. Um, and obviously, we've had sporting events going on all week long, we have additional events like Powder Puff Football Thursday evening with our home football game Friday evening, so, um, it's a great week, great spirit, um, and it's always, always a good week. I did provide the board a safety assessment quote from Don Shamet. Um, he was here for opening day to talk to our staff, and I do know that the board had a little bit of interest or said something about possibly having a, a third party come out and and put their own set of eyes on things, I don't know, J C, if you wanna share anything else with the board?
Yes, so Don is a retired Virginia State Trooper, retired SRO, he's a nationally recognized safety, um, expert. He spent the first day with us, talking to us about things that we can do to make our building safer, a lot of them are things that we already do, hopefully do them better. He connects well with adults, he does a lot of vignettes and stories, easy to relate to, I think he had a very good impact on our building and our whole district. Did a very nice job, the quote provided would be a full day of. The quote provided would be a full day of evaluation per building. So we'd spend an entire day from an hour before school starts here until, um, the end of the day for this building, and then same thing for the elementary building. Then he consults with our admin team about results and things that we could do to make our buildings better and also how to continue to work with our staff to develop some of those things we went over on the one-day training. So, um, it's an option for you. He does have some time, um, coming up in the next couple of months that he could do that. It's something that interests him. That money would be cost-able, so that cost would be payable through B O C's. He does a really nice job and, um, his solutions are practical, down where it makes sense. They have research and experience behind them. So he really is nice to, nice to work with.
Reading through that quote, it looked like there was training in there for the teachers as well that he was going to provide?
The training would probably come through us as an admin team to look at our, how will we train our faculty to continue to do some of those procedures? Some of that I think was also gone over in the one day in the beginning of the year already. So be reinforcing those and are some of those things being applied? So it's great to have a procedure or a policy in place. How, what's it look like in the real infield?
So I think it, I mean, it's great to have him come and look at the buildings and look at what we're doing. But I think that the teacher training, to me, is a huge part of it because unfortunately, when a situation does happen, they're the ones dealing with it. So to me, having a resource available to the teachers for the training would be important.
Is that something that the board is interested in us moving forward with?
Is it the best option? Would, uh, would our S R O, Jordan, would he feel as though there's other resources also that he would be interested in?
I, I would, and I'm going to speak on his behalf, I'd probably say that we do a lot of what he is going to tell us to do. Um, you know, Jordan has been to multiple trainings. We always go to safe schools. There's a handful of conferences. And Jordan says that when, when he comes back here, he realizes what other school districts aren't doing and what other, other S R Os aren't aware of. And, um, says that, you know, we've implemented a lot of what they're telling us to do. Um, I think Don was very impressed here with some of the things when, you know, he talked with our S R O, talked with me, um, just being here for that day and said, I, you know, I can really tell that you guys seem to be ahead of the game. So I don't necessarily think that this is something that we need to implement next week, but I, you know, I mean.
I can also interject, having taken the safety since two thousand and seven, starting the committee, we have not had an outside person come in into a threat assessment since probably two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve. Um, when we did that, it was, um, Mr. Plou was working as a marshal, so he came in. What was nice about his perspective is he isn't here every day seeing the things that we kind of overlook. And he was able to bring things to us that we never even considered, coming from a different angle, looking at it as a different lens, that we were able to clean up some areas of the buildings, just to make them safer for our students. So knowing that it's been a very long time since we've had a third-party review, it's just something else to consider.
Is that eight of what, eighty percent, ninety percent? What is that? Eighty-seven?
That's nice.
So it takes it down from what, give or take fourteen to? Four, fifteen, hundred, eighty, ninety?
I'm with Pete. I think it's the follow-through afterwards. I think that it's necessary. I think that's the whole reason we said we wanted a third-party to come in is because we wanted a fresh set of eyes to look at the building, so things aren't missed. But I think the follow-through afterwards and the training component, um, are, are equally as important. So I would like to, I don't know if that quote can be negotiated and maybe we can tailor it to what it is we're looking to get out of it, but maybe that could be a conversation we have with him.
Sounds as if we're interested in, is it Mr. Shamet?
Yes.
Yeah, services, is it? I guess I would just make sure that it's the best option. So we're going to bring somebody in, just make sure that, uh, Jordan hasn't come across somebody that he would say, boy, this, this person presents.
Yeah, why did we choose this person? Don is nationally known and I can tell you Jordan is very excited to have him here on opening day. He, um, he speaks fairly highly of himself.
Don's easy to approach, and J C and I have gone through three-day trainings with him. He gives you his personal cell phone number for a variety of reasons. So at any point, we could call and say, there's a situation, can we discuss? He never wants to know names of students or adults that could be potentially a threat to us. But he'll walk us through our threat assessment. He'll come out and help us conduct those. So he is very much available to us after you've gone through some of his trainings. Um, you all should meet him because he's pretty impressive.
Yes.
Okay. Um, the only other thing I have is in honor and true celebration of last year's eight sectional titles. I provided the board with, um, a little gift in, uh, into, to recognize that. So enjoy your Title Town shirts, um.
Thanks, John.
Wear them to our events and hopefully I got you the right size. There were just a handful there, so.
I'll wear the school to our.
I, I would love for you to. That would be great. So enjoy, enjoy the shirts.
Thank you very much.
And then admin, I don't know if you want to put around to him?
My good news, um, we have had a very successful start to our before and after-care program. Um, Janet and Katie are loving this role. The kids are very active. They're outside. They're playing board games. They're doing puzzles. Um, there's no technology. Um, they're very active. So I think the more our community hears about that, the kids are very excited. And, you know, some of the students from last year have said to me, this is a lot different. I really like coming, you know. So it's, it's worked out really, really nicely. So it's, it's nice to have that on the morning.
How many kids do you have?
Uh, give or take, we have about ten. Our morning seems to be a little bit heavier right now. Um, we have a good variety of fifth graders where families have to get to work before the school setting, so they come in in the morning. Um, but we just had a couple of kids register for the afternoons this week. So it's open registration. People can come and go. I'm working with families, um, that they have band starting. How does that work? How is that going to affect them? Um, so I think that the more the kids are talking about it and we're presenting how fun and positive it is. Um, Katie is also, um, she does have some educational training. So she is very willing to do some tutoring sessions for our after-school kids or our before-school kids. Um, really kind of focusing on our third, fourth, and fifth. If there's reading logs or fact fluency or, you know, fractions, it's, it's always fun. So I think that's a nice offering for our families as well.
Lynn, since the kiddos can't be bused to U P K until they turn four, do you think down the road, there could be consideration for those kiddos to get dropped off in the before-school program?
They could get dropped off currently.
So if they haven't turned four yet, they can still utilize the before-school program?
Yep, the only stipulation we have is that they are school-aged, and so they are a U P K to a fifth grader. Um, that is, that's the only stipulation. So families, they have full access regardless of their child's age, as long as they fall within the categories.
That's great.
So I have a couple of things. The six-one-one has taken off quite seamlessly, I have to say. There's some things that Lynn and I know we need to iron out for next year when we do it, just because we've just started this. But having a behavior specialist, the additional point five speech, um, that will point tonight, like, it has been solid. So I'm really happy to announce that it's going well and successful. Um, other part, I had a wonderful meeting today with Matt and Connie and our self-contained, um, middle high school teachers about using branching minds for I E P goal tracking, putting in their interventions, progress monitoring, and looking at the data to make decisions, using that then to develop P L S and I E Ps and use that to dry holes for next year. Um, and then that going up to next year's teacher to be Lucille that historical data as well. So, it's exciting.
Michelle, where, where's, what's branch, talk to me about branching minds a little bit more, please.
Data warehouse, you, for a lot of our interventionists and.
So branching minds is, it's utilized the way we're currently utilizing it, and it has much more potential. We started in the elementary and the secondary with our interventionists to track a student is receiving intervention services. What is their goal? What interventions are we utilizing, those evidence-based ones, and how are we progress monitoring? So you can track those goals. You can log the parent, their, um, family communications with them. We've been slowly expanding it. We can also actually, Amy, um, last year did speech. She started to experiment it to track our speech data. We can eventually, as we grow this program and learn about it, because it's very extensive. We can do behavioral things, counseling things, attendance, um, those early warning indicators, which we're starting to work with them. We wanted this year to slowly start introducing some of our special ed. Because like Michelle said, we want to collect that really objective data for I E Ps. It's, I'm going to be really honest, it's overwhelming and it's a lot. So it's, we're slowly rolling it out, just like with our six-one-one and any other new thing we do, there's crunchiness. But I think we've got a good plan going for special ed, how we're going to slowly introduce them to it. So it's like this place where you can take a child's whole history, and not just the numbers, but we have anecdotal notes that are in there. When there's an M T S S referral, it's attached right in there. And it's live documents. It's only has access to the people who have access, but it can be continually updated. The elementary's doing literacy profiles. We're starting with our littles. We can attach that right to a kid. So right now, anybody in this building can look back at the historical information for their kids. Now, in terms of the interventions that we're doing, that we just started recently adding. But we've got all our region's data uploaded in there, all our state data uploaded in there, any historical I ready data. So we can see that complete picture. Because what happened when I first, oh, our social emotional, that's right, our social emotional screeners that were doing K twelve that we piloted last year and will be implementing in full, that'll be in there. When I first came on board, the five, six, I, it was hard for that transition to happen. We're different buildings, and yes, our teachers communicate as best they can. But okay, well, what intervention did they have? Well, I need to share this doc with you. And it got a little bit easier with Google, but our sixth-grade interventionists and our sixth-grade teachers don't get that complete picture. And this is a way that we can do that and meet a lot of other needs in the district in terms of systems and data for our kids.
So frontline you use, right, to create I E Ps or I E P direct or what?
Cleartrack.
Cleartrack.
We will use your soon.
Yes, that's on the front.
July first.
Say that again?
We have Cleartrack currently, but we're wanting shifting to frontline.
Good, so you should shift to frontline.
Yes, yes, it is happening.
That should be, that, that, that's hopefully something that you're going to be able to use. But then how do you tie school tool? Is school tool tied into branching minds at all?
So branching minds pulls that assessment data right from school tool. It pulls all our student data.
Because ideally, let's say kindergarten Matt is struggling, just because I picture you struggling kindergarten, at least socially. Uh, and so then, see, that's, he gets an award, I gotta take it back. So then you, 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 you take him to, what's our intervention team called? So like, we have a group of teachers?
M T S S.
You call it M T S S, okay. So then you sit in that room, talking about Matthew, and you come up with strategies or interventions. That's documented. That goes on Matthew's record that then would transfer up to first grade and say, these are our.
All of branching minds.
These are, this is what we try with Matt, and he doesn't, then the first-grade teacher doesn't have to do it again?
Correct.
And we don't say, hey, let's, let's, let's have Matthew have smiley stickers until he behaves or whatever. So it's, so then we'll work on that. And then hopefully, we're not looking at a student in sixth grade says, hmm, maybe this student needs to be um, looking down that specialized classification line, like we've been doing in the past.
So in fact, this kind of conversation, like, with them coming more newer than me, I have the history of a lot of these kids, but it, I can't always remember. I don't always have their documents. So I was to the point where I'm searching kids' names in my drive to say to Connie, here are the seven M T S S, this is the tracking, this is the progress, this is how this worked for this kid. So it got really wonky.
Well, it's massive, that's massive.
And it's really difficult for sixth-grade teachers to kind of get a hold of me. They don't want to call me to ask me about that kid. So branching minds is a seamless process. Everything is there. And we can show, maybe the next meeting, you can pull up Jake Gaylor, you can see, you can see his scores, his, his triangles, all of the notes, all of that's there.
So it's basically a transfer of profiles from one grade to the next, one teacher to the next, one building to the next.
And the graphs are really nice. I know Amy Kojak for speech, she has some really nice graphs that show the child's progress. It gets the trend line. Um, so they're very parent-friendly also, which I love because when you're having meetings with parents, we use too many acronyms. We speak our own language in education. This was not a very threatening report to show and talk about. And it's a good visual for parents to see that progress instead of saying, oh, they're doing well, they're progressing, they did a disco, now they're doing this go, or whatever. It gives you that numerical objective data for that visually.
Where do we get this from, Michelle? Where did this come from?
It, branching minds is, it, they are.
Coming from that. Yeah, yeah. We had a couple of colleagues that were using it in other schools that had talked about frontline and then talked about branching minds. And we kind of looked at both and felt branching minds was going to meet our needs because of the social emotional side that we really are trying to build up with that, the M T S S process.
It's taking our, all our different pieces and having a system deployment place.
Yeah, because, because Google's great, but it's not going to, it's, it's not recorded.
Well, we all know it's used Google, it was getting absolutely crazy.
So you can see their math and their reading and their social emotional triangles all in one screen, which is nice.
Yeah, I'd like to see more. I don't know what the rest of the board does, but I'd like, I'd like to see more.
I do. I want to see that social emotional piece.
Have a better idea about this.
And then it goes deeper into behavior stuff. So the behavior specialists can track all the behavior plans and whatever intervention they've used.
And we're just growing boards, yeah.
Work it out, yeah.
And it's, we're.
Feeling it all out, but it's exciting.
Yeah, we're in baby steps with it, for sure.
So October, Connie?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Or what, what did Terry Roberts first used to tell us today? She was next week.
So, so Friday, you want this all by front? We were teasing, because we're like, we're just, we're doing it slow. We promise, we're going to roll this out.
Chump it out for them, just as loco, and, well, we never eat it, but.
Yeah, thank you, ladies.
So the good news I want to share, it's a little bit old, but we had a great new teacher orientation. Um, just really enthusiastic, energetic educators that we've brought up more to join our team. I actually had one of our educators in the teacher orientation with tears in their eyes say, I can't believe this place is real. And it was just literally from our two days of orientation, it was the second day. Because admin come in and out, and we have lunch with them, we have their bus tour, and it, we, we laugh, we have fun, we're serious, we share. And it was just really refreshing to hear them say, we can't believe this place is real. So that, it felt really good. And hopefully tonight, with some of the appointments that we hope that you approve, we are going to be just about fully staffed. So that was, that's just good news. Exciting.
We've had a great start to the new year, to the new school year. Um, sixth graders have made the transition really well. They're really excited to be up here. Um, we're doing a lot of attendance tracking right now in terms of, uh, making sure kids are on track to have a good year. And Deputy Alejandro and I have been looking, bringing together a wish list to work with Christine at using some potential grant money to do some, get some more equipment, some cameras that we'd like to put in better places and things of that nature, um, for school safety. So good start to the school year, it feels fun.
Feels very normal.
I'll, I'll talk a little bit about homecoming. Mr. Fiskus mentioned the fun on Thursday nights with the Powder Puff and the Ball and Ball. And of course, you'll see sporting events all week. It's a, it's a great week. You'll see that, you'll see the kids having fun. But what you don't see is the behind-the-scenes planning, um, the organization that goes out with Tracy slagging off from the senior high, pre-trampoline at the middle high, what they do behind the scenes to make homecoming work is just tremendous. Um, my kids go to a, a, a local school. When I ask them about their homecoming, it's just, it's nothing like what we do here. It really is a blast for our kids, and the credit goes to Tracy and Bree. They do a fantastic job. So I'll also add, uh, our student support system, which we launched last year. When, uh, today I met with department leaders and teachers to talk about what worked, what we can improve. So there's some suggestions to improve what we do internally as far as communication and just to continue on with that system as we launch it here and here too. So that meeting went well, and I expect big things to come together this year.
Some good news I have to share is, uh, the Edgercheck truck pulled in at one o'clock today with a hundred eighty-five of our new Chromebooks that we've been waiting for since about April, May. So here's the first one, sitting right here. At the top of the priority list will be all the staff, including board members, administrators, teachers, to make sure that they have the latest, the greatest. Then we'll probably be going up with ninth grade, ruling into tenth. I have another batch coming later that'll go to eleventh and twelfth. So by the end of this school year, the Dell fifty-one ninety, which I think many of you have there, is the one that will be retired or will be included in the loner pile. Uh, so you guys will be seeing those coming probably by next board meeting. You'll have the newer ones, uh, lighter, faster, brighter, everything greater about it. Uh, and the other piece that I wanted to mention is the self-insurance that we've started this year. Uh, after seven years now, we have our own self-insurance program so that we're not paying a third-party vendor all the extra fees. Uh, we are able to, uh, if you have the number, about twenty dollars. Instead of last year, it was thirty-two. If you stayed with that company, they told me forty-seven dollars. And why would you pay forty-seven dollars for insurance when if you do nothing, it's something breaks, it's fifty dollars, that's, you know, not worth it. So we decided to take it on our own to do that. And to make that work, we use ParentSquare for the payments piece, which Christine helped us set up too. So the tech department is able to have receive, um, checked, credit, debit cards, not doing cash, so that we can handle that through ParentSquare. Um, I can say that's really. Um I can say that's really made it very seamless, very easy for people to not have to worry about creating another login, not having to put in credentials. It's just a tool they already use, the Parent Square app, and they can use that to, right now do Chromebook stuff, but later on the road, it could be for chicken barbecue, it could be for other stuff. So it's a good piece that we've brought in a lot of Chromebooks. So I have.
Wendy, anything to report?
Hi. Um so again, the year has started out well. We, as the teachers, had um our first O A T A meeting um on the Tuesday before school started. Um and we kicked off with having a a huge discussion as to the communication piece that we're going to be implementing this year. So um we're going to have monthly meetings in each building to um have our members um be able to function better by giving them an outlet to come directly to us um with any concerns they have. Um it's also going to be a forum where we're going to present some information, whether it's on our vote code stuff or how to read their contract better. Um and just know what is going on and stuff like that. So we'll have um the first Wednesday of the month is for elementary. The second Wednesday of the month is for the middle high. The third Wednesday of the month is for our executive meetings. Um and then in between all of that, our building reps are meeting with the administrative teams in both buildings to just kind of hash out some stuff. And um just try and make sure that everybody's on the same page and um handle all the stuff that comes our way.
Great plan, Wendy. Nice job.
My goodness. Thanks.
Mr. Warner, are you ready?
Yeah, um.
Okay.
Uh I guess everybody's already said this school year's been going great. Um it really does feel normal. You know, I I went through three quarters, my freshman year normal, and it feels like that again, which is really good. Um the leaving school early, I know a lot of my friends, especially athletes, really appreciate that, being able to go home, grab some food, get your stuff for practice before you. Uh you can even relax, do homework. And uh me personally, I can get a lot more done in forty minutes at home than I can in those study halls, so that's really nice. And that's all I got, B J.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, we're onto some new business here. Um be it resolved that items eight point two through eight point nine be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Um some discussion? Just uh real quick, uh John, for items eight seven, eight eight and eight point nine.
Yes.
Explain to Jackie and myself, this is um not like absolute authorization to make any decision that you would like to in the world, but there are. Um there's some reasons behind this.
Yeah, um we talked as a, as a, as a group, more the superintendent's group, in some, some school districts, depending on the timing of things. Um just with everything going on, um we, you know, we need to function daily. And sometimes it can't wait till next month for a board meeting to get things officially approved. So if you take a look at um eight seven, uh for example, you know, there may be um a situation where we have a vacancy. And we're gonna hire somebody and maybe that person isn't currently working and man, they can start tomorrow, but our board meeting's not for another three weeks. Um it authorizes me, us, the district, to say, we can start this pers- person before the official board approval. A lot of this is auditing purposes. Um where is the board approval? Because you started somebody, you started paying them and they weren't formally board approved. This basically says, well, look, I have the authorization per this resolution here that I can start employees or I can sign contracts that might be time sensitive. Um there's things where Christine may need to move things um money-wise in between board meetings. Or there are just other functions, and and this doesn't happen daily, but there are situations that come up. Um and I think I I always alert you to, hey, look, we need to do this. Do you have any issue with us, you know, starting somebody earlier? Me signing off on this before our next meeting because um again, it's just normal operations and business that we, that we need to to provide. So that's really what eight seven through eight nine are. Um is there just, you know, um authorizations that we can do things when they pop up? Um I'll certainly keep the board informed, but um really it's just for auditing purposes, you know, in those regards and certain situations.
Does this eliminate the need for some, like, we've come in on those special meetings to just approve one sometimes, five minute?
Sometimes. And and that all depends. If 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 we want to, if if you need to, if there's, if there's something that big that we would like to have a special meeting for, we can certainly do that. But again, you know, in the course of of our weekly, you know, I mean, obviously we had an unexpected resignation from a, from a teaching position. Now we're kind of scrambling before the school year starts. We hire somebody and it's like, uh, do I have to wait now till this meeting to get them moving?
Right.
Um you know, it's it's gonna be more so of those situations.
Josh? But so it'll still be brought to the board for an official approval?
Yes, absolutely, by the next meeting, yes. And I will notify you that week, whether in my weekly update or whether through a a daily update, yes, absolutely.
Can the same then be said for C P S E or C S E placements for students? I mean, instead of if a child qualifies for services the day after a board meeting, having to then wait until the following month to get those services implemented, could this be a situation where?
Michelle, do you normally, I mean.
So C P S E, we wait till the board meeting.
Right.
C, C S E, we start.
You start right away.
Right, the day after the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, those wait lists are just starting to grow and I know that sometimes waiting two weeks to four weeks could mean a kid goes on a waitlist and doesn't get the services that they need. So I would say that would be a situation where waiting for a board meeting.
Yeah, and if we were in a situation where something like that came up with C P S E, you know, it would be something that I could talk to John about and there's something now and we get started right away.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh opposed? Uh motion passes.
Aye.
Okay, Carol, any communications for us tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, um then we're gonna uh bypass discussion roundtable, so there's nothing on there for tonight. And then uh personnel, uh be it resolved that items eleven point two through eleven point eight be approved by consent agenda. Uh can I get a motion?
So moved.
Uh can I get a second?
Second.
Uh any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Now, um resignation, uh eleven point nine resignation of point five special education teacher. Uh be it resolved, the board accepts uh the resignation of Hillary Ruckdassel, uh point five special education teacher. Uh can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Uh any discussion? Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh opposed? Motion passes. Uh eleven point ten resignation of secondary art teacher be it resolved, the board accepts the resignation of Kim Lupe, our teacher. Uh accepted a position with Churchville Chi I. Uh can I get a motion?
So moved.
Uh second?
Second.
Um any discussion? I'd like to thank Kim Lupe for her service here at Oakfield. Uh she served both at the elementary and at the middle high school, so wish you the best of luck. Um Kim, and hopefully you enjoy uh your time at Churchville Chi I. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh opposed? Uh motion passes. Uh okay, uh eleven, uh eleven, retirement be it resolved, uh that the board accepts the notice of retirement from Richard, or from Richard Anderson. Um I T system support manager. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Uh can I get a second?
Second.
Uh any discussion? Still a few more months, Richard. Uh he's gonna say thank you when it comes to that time, but thank you uh for your service. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, um eleven twelve, uh be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of Hillary Ruckdassel to the four-year probationary position of special education teacher effective September first, twenty twenty-two. And ending September first of twenty twenty-six. Um she is uh taking on the assignment of twelve one one classroom at the elementary school. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Uh can I get a second?
Second.
Uh discussion? Uh thank you, Hillary.
Yes, thank you.
Uh all the smokes. Um all right, thought we had a person for the position, um but that didn't uh work out and I am very appreciative that you stepped up. Uh twelve one one is a very uh difficult assignment and um I also would like to thank Megan Williams for mentoring her um in in that situation. And I I really hope she uh enjoys this position and she gets a ton of her support, because twelve one one teachers need a ton of support. Uh it's a, it's a tough job. Um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh motion passes. Thank you, thank you, Hillary. Uh seriously. Um okay. Secondary art teacher. I'm taking a wild guess. That's why you're here. Uh be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of Benjamin Holmes to a four-year probationary position of art teacher effective September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two and ending September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six. Um his agreement for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year will be at the middle high school building. Um can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Welcome. Welcome.
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome. Um all in favor? Congratulations.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Hey, do you wanna?
I will say that Ben really impressed the committee. He came in for a process that was pretty thorough. We had a committee that was typical of most of our committees. We asked a dozen questions or so. He had an opportunity to ask us questions. We were really impressed. Um he also came in and taught a lesson to our eighth graders and that's where he kind of won us over. Did a fantastic job. And when you get to know him, I think just either he's a wild man or we can connect his character, he's gonna do great things out there.
Yes.
You ready?
Hopefully.
So yeah, what's your choice, right? Next time I see you, your beer is gray. I know it's, I'm star.
Welcome, Ben.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for being here. Best, best of luck.
Thank you.
Uh you're welcome. Um on to uh eleven fourteen, part-time speech therapist. Uh be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of Jennifer Ventry to the position of point five speech therapist effective September nineteenth, yesterday, uh twenty twenty-two. Um can I get a motion?
So moved.
Uh second?
Second.
Uh any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Executive session, uh be it resolved that the Board of Education will enter into executive session at seven forty-three P M for the purposes of discussing the superintendent evaluation and for negotiating the superintendent's contract. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh. Opposed? Motion passes for executive session six forty-three.